If that's all right with everybody, I hope you can hear me. I'm having some computer problems tonight, I guess, huh? But let's, that's not going to stop us. Let's start our meeting. Welcome, everybody. Today is Monday, March 8th, to our town council meeting. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Christopher Pulis.
Present.
Paul Chaplinsky. Paul is here. Michael Del Santo.
Present.
Valerie DePaolo.
Here.
William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli.
Here.
Christopher Palmieri.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
I'm here, thank you very much. Um, let's go right into the prayer, Madam Clerk, if you could, and we'll go right into the flag salute after.
Heavenly Father, may we consider the people of Southington and always render what is right and just for our citizens. Help us to be compassionate while still seeking what is appropriate for the entire community. Amen.
Amen. You join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You, everybody. May I have a motion on the minutes from our prior meeting, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you, Chris. So do I have a second?
A second.
Tom, thank you very much. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody who has a problem, please say no. All right, hearing nothing, it has been approved unanimously. Thank you so much. We're going to get right into Councilmatic Communications. Before we get into anything heavy, I would like a motion to add an executive session to our agenda tonight. So could I have a motion, please? Paul, I think you need that motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion. Mike Del Santo.
I'll second.
And Paul, you're seconding it. Thank you. All those in favor.
Madam Chair, we need, Mr. Mark showed, we need a reason for the executive.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's for personnel. I'm sorry, I wrote it down, I didn't say it. Yep, for personnel. So any discussion on it? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much. So let's get right into things. The first item on our agenda is the Town Council Diversity Subcommittee. And I would like us to have a bit of a discussion. It's on for action at the end of our meeting, so I thought this would be a good time to discuss the, the, the proposal that is before us. So I just leave it up to the council. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this?
I, I.
Okay, Val, go ahead.
So I guess just by way of the, of process for tonight, is there going to be discussion when we vote on it under old business?
Yes, absolutely. I wanted to just, if anybody had anything they wanted to.
Okay.
Speak in general to, right now, I want to make sure we give them the opportunity.
Okay, good, no, thank you. I just, I just wanted to make sure. So, um, Madam Chair, I'll just make a, just a, a brief comment on the, on the proposal. So the, the proposal that, the proposal that you and I and Pastor Brown and Michelle LeBrone Griffin worked on, that is the proposal that Counselor Palmieri, Counselor Pulis, and myself would like to put forward. That's the proposal that we believe will be in the best interest of our community. We believe it's a proactive and solutions-oriented proposal and would represent a diverse, you know, diverse perspectives of, of our community. It would serve as a resource for us, for the town council. And it has an open application process, which we can, we can talk about much more later. So, you know, we'll reserve our comments for later, but we just want to make sure that the public is aware that that proposal was worked on collaboratively with you and I, two community members. Reverend Ron Brown did send a letter to the council today. I know everybody, I hope everybody received it. It was a very well-written letter in which he's supporting the proposal that we worked on. And then I'll, I'll reserve the rest of my comments for later in the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You know, the, the, that has not been formally put out in, uh, public, in the public. You know what I'm saying? So we have not had it, we have not openly discussed that proposal. We're not really prepared to discuss it this evening because it has not been submitted. So I, I just, I want to be fair with, with everybody involved. I want them to be able to know the proposal and to speak on that. So, but we will continue to, to talk when, when it comes up, Val, if that's all right.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Your words are noted, sir, sure. Anybody else? Anybody?
Oh, Madam Chair?
Yep, yes.
Until, until next year, I'd just like to close out our polar plunge discussion this past Saturday. Councilman Dietzick, Morelli, Board of Finance member, Tony Morrison, former counselor in the tally, and members of the Democratic Town Committee jumped, and actually several other groups as well. It was a great event, and it raised over $82,000 this year, which I, I haven't heard officially, but I do believe that might be a, a new record. So thank you to the YMCA for putting on another stellar year of the polar plunge. And, and thank you to all the community members. I'm sure all of us saw our social media friends and family members of, from different organizations in town taking part in it. So it was definitely a fun time. So, thank you.
That's great news. I know that Y could certainly use that, that money for camperships and whatever. Very good. Anybody else? Item B is the request for a public hearing on the, at the Board of Finance. Chris, did you want to speak about that now?
Uh, yes, if I could.
Sure, of course, go ahead.
Okay, so Vicki, sorry, sorry, I can't see you.
I know, I feel bad, I keep trying to get on, but it says there's something else open, so I don't know what it is. I don't have any. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. First of all, Vicki, I want to thank you for adding this item to the agenda per my request last meeting. I, I, and I told you that, but I want to let you know how much I appreciate that publicly. So thank you for that. The next point, before I get to the actual proposal, I just want to share another observation. I, I do think we need to be very careful about how the agenda is prepared in the hope of offering full transparency for our residents. I shared at the last meeting that we passed the LGBTQIA+ resolution two meetings ago by adding it to the agenda after the meeting already began. Last meeting, we discussed and voted on a resolution specific to the increased auto crimes in our community, but it was listed only as resolution on the agenda. Uh, my item for tonight stemmed from that discussion at the last meeting, specific to our police force. So I know we know the process as elected officials, but we know the process to add something to the agenda at this point is to schedule a public hearing with the Board of Finance, but the public may not be aware of that. So rather than listing the action item as it is, I offer, it should have had at least mentioned the purpose of the public hearing, which is to proposal tonight about adding officers to our police force. So again, be, you know, I just think it's important, I, I'm concerned because it's three meetings in a row where, you know, it just wasn't clear to people that aren't necessarily aware of what's going on.
This is Councilmatic Communication, though it's not public. But I take your, I, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing you, Chris, thank you.
Okay. So the, and I know we all stand united in our concerns related to the increased auto crimes in our community. Our community, I think we hear them loud and clear. There's, there's an issue, and quite frankly, they're looking to us to do something to address that issue. So, you know, I, I, I thank our residents for doing everything they can and, and reaching out to us as well. The difference, I feel, is simply in our belief in how best to address the issue itself. Rather than issue resolution about changing legislation at the state level, which is not in our purview as council members, I proposed at the last meeting that we take action that is within our authority as members of the Southington Town Council. So specifically, I proposed we looked at adding staff to our police department. The request is due to several points. First of all, the increase in car crimes is very concerning. The pandemic may have played a significant role in this uptick. Neighborhood watch groups have formed and are a great, and are of a great assistance to our police department. Our police officers do a tremendous job, but they cannot be everywhere at all times. We have heard from the chief in the past that our department is understaffed, and I'll revisit that shortly. In fact, as you all know, we added officers last year. And adding additional staff is a proactive measure to combat some of those lines. So with that, you know, after reaching out since the last meeting, I spoke to the chief a couple of times and, and the town manager, just to get a better sense of how best to, to proceed. One of the things that I wasn't aware of that in, in, the chief brought to my attention is that when we look at budget cycles and, and potentially hiring people, we all know our budget cycle runs from July 1st and it goes till June 30th of the following year. So this, this budget that we're talking about would begin July 1st, 2021, and end June 30th, 2022. So the chief shared that there are going to be significant retirements in his department. And obviously, the need isn't filling those and replacing those officers that are retiring first. So what that means is because there's significant officers that he's going to have to, the department is going to have to look for, recruit, and hire starting in July, it just makes a little bit more sense to maybe revisit specifically when, if we proceed to move forward with the possibility of hiring other officers and look at the timeframe. So I'm proposing that rather than hiring an additional officer for the, for the full fiscal year, we look at hiring two additional officers that would start January 1st, 2022. This would allow the chief time to hire, train, recruit new officers. And we all know, we don't know if that means they're coming from other departments in the state. Maybe they need to go to the academy, so we don't know what that training looks like. But it would allow him time to hire the replacements for the retirements in the summer months and then not wait a full other fiscal cycle to offer additional officers to the department. Hopefully, that would allow them to get quality candidates. Those of us that do hiring in large amounts know how difficult it is when you're looking to hire multiple people at the same time. This would just allow things to be spread out a little bit more. Further, listen, thinking about budgetary concerns moving forward, it would, it would lessen a fiscal cliff within a budget. Should we add two new officers half a year each? It would be the equivalent of adding one officer next year and then obviously continuing on. It would be moving on for the full fiscal year, the equivalent of financially adding two additional officers moving on. So again, the proposal, adding two officers at 50% each, starting in January 1st, 2022. Some background information that I shared with all of you. We, we, we did, we, we, we hired two additional police officers last year. The first officer was hired already and has been a division. The second officer will, will complete training. He probably already did, at the time it was last week, so that's just to bring everyone up to speed. The, the thing that's especially concerning is the rate for New England towns with our population is 1.9 officers per 1,000 citizens, which is approximately 82 officers. We currently have 70. This statistics, this statistic comes directly from the U.S. Department of Justice, specifically the FBI. So again, this isn't a figure that the, the chief takes lightly, that, that's, that's where the source is from. Obviously, hope, the hope in the long range is the more personnel we hire, the better chance the chief has of managing his department and relying less on overtime. So the specific request tonight is to schedule a public hearing with the Board of Finance to add two additional officers by increasing the police department by $121,588. That figure came from our town's finance director. And it would be specific for the hiring of two additional officers, January 1st, 2022, and not intended to be utilized for any other purpose. So the reason I say that is because if something changes between now and then significantly, and we don't necessarily need to do that, then that money would remain. And it could either go back to budget reallocation, which would allow the manager an opportunity to look at some funding opportunities that maybe are a priority at, at the closeout of the budget cycle or return right back to the undesigned fund balance. So essentially, it, it would not be a cost if, if that were the scenario. So that's, that's essentially what I'm looking for, potential action later on. As you all know too, because the manager's budget was presented and the timelines of everything with our council meeting happening right after all this had occurred, it, the, the charter does outline the process, which is to schedule a public hearing specific for this with the Board of Finance. So that, that's the request, hence the, the way the agenda item is listed in the, on the agenda.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so would anybody like to have further discussion now? Or do we want to wait until the end of the agenda? I'm open for discussion now.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, so go ahead, Paul.
Very simple question for Chris. Chris, you've made some, you've alluded to the fact that you've had meetings with the chief and the town manager about the issue, possibly about budget.
Communicating, communicating, not, not. Communication, communication.
Okay. You, you've obviously communicated about auto crimes and you've communicated about your, your proposal. Question to you is, did the chief or the town manager explicitly tell you that hiring two new police officers will reduce the auto crimes in Southington? Just yes or no? Thank you, that's all I have.
Anyone else want to speak?
Madam Chair, this is Bill. I, if I can speak real quick.
Sure. Go ahead.
Chris, I guess I, I just would say thank you. I, I learned a decent amount from your, the Record Journal article and what you said tonight. And I'm interested in the topic because, you know, the last thing we want to be accused of is virtue signaling.
Oh, you're breaking, I don't know if it's my internet or your internet, I, you're.
Am I breaking up for everyone else? It could be that I have my earbuds in, is, can anyone else hear me?
You're fine, Bill.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Chris, yes.
Chris, you, Chris Palmieri's picture is frozen, but we can hear you still, Chris. Yes, we can hear you, Chris.
I can hear you. Can you, so I guess, I'll just pick up where I left off. So, Chris, I do want to say thank you. I, I, I learned a lot from.
I can't, I can't hear you.
I wish my Chris is having technical difficulties.
I say.
Chris, you might want to log off and plug back on.
Or.
Yeah. It's your end.
Chris, I'm happy to wait. I, I, I want you to hear what I say because I'm not, it's important, so I'll, I'll happy to wait till you're ready. But, Madam Chair, in the interim, you know, it's an important subject, and I don't want to put, I don't want to make it about politics for the town manager or the, you know, but can I just get confirmation?
Bill, Bill, I, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything you said.
Okay, I can hear you now, Chris. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I think I'm getting you back. I don't know what happened, but, oh, was it you, Tom? I couldn't, I couldn't hear who was talking.
I think it's Councilman Dietzick's back on now. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay.
Chris, let me, Chris, let me just start from the beginning, so, and if you can't hear me, let me know. So, Chris, I do want to say thank you for bringing this issue forth. I, I, again, none of us want to be accused of virtue signaling. So again, we passed a resolution, if we don't do anything, that's not our job. So I do, I do appreciate you bringing this issue and the research you put forth. I found your New England crime stats very well reasoned. I'm very interested in what you said, but my concern is this, okay? I, I will never, ever think that I have the hubris to micromanage any department in this town. I don't know how to run a police department, a fire department, any of those. So is there anything in the record, I may ask Mark, if, or Mr. Town Manager, yes or no question? Is there a request in connection with the past year's car break-ins for additional police officers? Just yes or no? I'm not, I don't want to get into it further. And Madam Chair, that's direct to the mount, that's direct to the town manager.
Asking me a question, Bill?
I am, I am, Mr. Town Manager, through the chair, if you don't mind.
Okay, and the question is, did the department ask for additional officers for the car break-ins?
In connection with what has happened in this past year with the car break-ins?
Uh, no, we, there, there were no additional officers asked for this year. As you recall, there were two last year.
Yeah, and that's my only question. So I appreciate it, and Chris, thank you for putting forth what you did. I know this is kind of work behind your end too, but that was just, I just didn't know the answer until tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all set, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dietzick. Anyone else like to talk on this matter at this time?
I'll have a word, please, Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Tom.
I will, I will also reiterate what Councilman Dietzick said in, in thanking Councilman Palmieri for, for his intent and his willingness to, to take action against the, the car theft issue here. But for me, I, I think we as a council have been speaking loud and clear. And I know the chief and the town manager have heard us that, you know, if they need extra overtime to, to allocate hours, where they need hours, and whatever they deem necessary to, to do their job best, we support them. The fact that the chief did not request more manpower this year, I, I'm going to focus on the chief of police's recommendation and, and move forward in that matter. But I, I do appreciate the council's support of our police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, Mike Del Santo.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I want to say is we've heard time and time again, we've had a number of presentations, and we all know the situation. If a police officer comes across one of these vandals and they fly by them, police officer cannot pursue. So if we hire two more police officers, that's two more police officers that can stand there and watch and get on 84 and tip off. I mean, I just, I don't see the need to hire two new police officers specifically to deal with this situation, although they'd be doing other things, obviously, but I just think it's a knee-jerk reaction. I just don't know the value of, of this request because we know that the problem exists at the state level, at the legislation level, at the prosecutor level. And I'm unsure the hiring two officers is going to alleviate the situation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Anyone else would like to be heard on this? Uh, yes, Mr. Pulis.
Madam Chair. Yeah, I just, I just want to respond to the question, I believe, for, that Mr. Dietzick made about a chief requesting police officers from the town manager in the last year on this topic. Um, I seem to recall that, like, the plan in place was to, the town manager was to have two firefighters hired, two police hired, two public works hired, so that we had a, a deliberate system of, you know, balancing out which departments are getting manpower per year. And so I think if the town manager's speaking to his departments that way, and they're working in conjunction with him, that they would respect that. Now, we've had a, a, a new situation come up in that plan. And so our job, in, in our purview, is we have the ability, we have the ability to intervene if we think that it would be helpful. And, um, and that's what we're doing here. I don't see, I don't see why the chief would request if he just received police officers last year. And so now we're saying that, now we have a, a different set of circumstances that might change that plan. Think Mr. Palmieri has researched the finances behind this. He's been thoughtful, and I just wanted to respond with those comments about the other comments that were made.
Thank you so much. I've, I, I don't know if you see me, oh, like, but all the, the thumbnails are pretty large now, so please mention it when, when you want to speak, and I'll try my very best. Thank you very much. Chris, is there anyone else who would speak at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So, yes, I just, I want to thank Counselor Palmieri too for all the, the research that, that's been done on this. And I, I understand where you're coming from as, as far as it's not something that the chief has asked for. However, if the national standard is showing that our town should have, you know, 82 police officers, and, and we're at 70, this, this is an opportunity that we did not expect that would come up. And it's an, it's an opportunity that appears to be pretty fiscally responsible to do. It's not a, it's not a large amount of money. It's not going to impact our taxpayers in a, in a negative manner. It's a way to, to give our, our police department two more officers. And, you know, we've heard over the last couple of months that, you know, we've had a, an increase in the grant list. We've had, we've had federal funds coming in. We've, we're going to have some state funds probably coming in. Our town is doing extremely well. So our, our revenue and, and our assets even during COVID have, we've, we've gotten through this really well. I hear us saying that Southington's the town to be in. People want to come to Southington. It's a great town to live in. So if people are going to come to Southington, I want to make sure that our public safety, our infrastructure is where it should be. The police department is critical. So if we have an opportunity to provide two police officers, as, as Counselor Pulis has said, we didn't expect this. This is, this is an opportunity that's come up. It came up, you, you know, you brought it up with the resolution, and we looked at it. You know, I think it's a great opportunity, and I, I think we, I think it's a, not a three-point shot. So I, I would like to see us, you know, do this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Paul, did you want to say anything?
I do, Madam Chair, but Jim was before me.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Jim. Jim Morelli, please, Councilman Morelli, go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have so many things, I got to get in order. I don't agree that it won't, just won't impact the taxpayers. I, I think it's a year-over-year hit to a budget. We've heard time and time again that each department in the town is run by a manager, and those managers report to the town manager, and there's a lot of thought and process that goes into staffing levels. And to say that the national standards are not being met, the department hasn't, hasn't had a national standard in all these years. So you can't make that comparison. I, I find this whole thing pretty offensive, actually. I, I think that we have a nine-number board here, and I don't remember ever the chief saying that he needed more manpower. We've asked him on a number of occasions what he needs from the, from us, he never said more people. So how does one person decide to go and contact the chief of police, the town manager on behalf of the town council to ask for two more police officers? I, I think, to me personally, this is crazy. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, yes, I just, a couple, a couple items that I wanted to highlight. I took some time today to take a look at, um, you know, I, I, I heard this evening that we're talking about a national standard. And, um, you know, national standards, when we talk about, uh, New England, New England communities can be skewed one way or another. Of course, you know, towns like Middletown and New Britton have higher numbers of, of police officers. What I'll say is I don't profess to be the expert in the national standards. I trust the town manager. I trust the, the police chief to come with us with some, some information. I would say, you know, you know, us going to, you know, us going to the, to the, to the police chief and, and saying that, that they need more resources to combat crime, specifically saying that we don't meet the national standard, and this is what's needed to meet the crime, is like, maybe putting it in different terms, a board of ed member who's a nurse going to the assistant superintendent and saying, "You need special language instruction, you need more teachers. I suggest you hire two more teachers because I see you have a deficiency, and that's going to affect your deficiency." I don't see it as being appropriate. I don't see it as, you know, leveraging the expertise in the room. I'll say, nobody submit. I'll say, nobody submit, nobody has supported the police officers more than we have. Uh, we championed, uh, the fight against, uh, the police accountability, uh, bill last year, we championed it. We're the ones that went and fought for this, we're the ones that stood by our police officers. And so if there is a resource requirement to be had and the police chief and the town manager come to us with that requirement, it will, for sure, I know I'll be supporting it, especially these days if they say to me, this is what I need to solve this problem. So I don't think, uh, that, I don't think that's what I've heard, and just for the record, uh, Councilperson Paul Mary stated that the town manager and the chief did not make that claim to him when he did his results. On the national standard, I calculate that Southington is around one point six three according to Mr. Paul Mary's, um, information or the, uh, the, the standard that he's citing. Uh, and I believe that the insinuation made, uh, by those who are supporting this tonight is that by increasing the national standard, uh, we will do what the chief has said, has not said, I should say, and that it's gonna positively affect the crime that we're seeing in automobiles, and I'll say, and I'll tell you that towns such as Cheshire, our next-door neighbors, at one point six nine, while we're at one point six three, we're on par. Towns such as Berlin is at two point one, and guess what? They're at two point one, so they have more, more per, uh, per capita. However, their, uh, crime rates went up three hundred percent-ish while ours were up to twenty-five. Wallingford, same, Wallingford is like the standard that Southington is, is known to compare against, is at one point five seven. Southington's at one point six three. Glastonbury, one point nine four. Auto crimes up around three hundred percent a- as well. So to merely say that having a higher ratio and insinuate that having a higher ratio is gonna solve the problem, um, I believe is misleading, and it's misleading, uh, those on the board and it's misleading our residents. I'll again say that nobody has supported police more than we have, now I'll also say, I've heard in this room tonight and I've heard all over the community and, and certain social areas, that this is a COVID problem. And we're supposed to just ignore this because it's a COVID problem, that's not the case. In fact, it's not a COVID problem. Our Hartford Current article, March two thousand nineteen, which is a year before COVID. The headline says, "Police Chiefs and Other Law Enforcement Pack the Public Safety, uh, and Security Committee Room." And I'll quote, "Law enforcement officials across the state hit by a wave of auto thefts causing House Bill seven-three-three-two, which is the automatic transfer of juveniles to the adult courts." This was two, three, four years ago, uh, I'm sorry, two years ago, a year before the pandemic. So that was two thousand nineteen, which means this problem was occurring before two thousand nineteen. So we can't say that this is a COVID problem and that this is all of a sudden occurring, our professionals, our police chief saw this coming a long way. Madam Chair, I'd also like to offer that, um, I've heard a lot about the juvenile reform system.
Madam Chair, point of order, there's someone that has their microphone off of you.
I got it.
Sorry, I just can't hear you, Paul.
I'll also point out, Madam Chair, that, um, this bill, this, this resolution that we passed last week
Yes.
was also passed, in principle, the same, the same technical terms were passed by Berlin. It was headed up by the Berlin mayor. For those of you who don't know the history of the Berlin mayor, he's a thirty-year DEA official, a Pepperdine Law University, uh, professional. He reviewed his proposal, the one that we passed last week with, with the, uh, Connecticut State's Attorney. And for those who you don't know, they're the ones that prosecute criminals on behalf of us, the residents of Connecticut. And the State's Attorney agreed, and this is the reason why the mayor of Berlin proposed with the Town Council that resolution, which we also adopted as a neighbor of, of Berlin. I'd like to say, uh, Madam Chair, that, uh, here's a few other items, uh, that are noteworthy. In two thousand and nineteen, pre-COVID, Waterbury Police Chief Ferdinand Spagnolo testified that, uh, that they're in favor of the repeat offender moving from the juvenile reform, moving from the juvenile system to the adult system. In fact, Democratic, uh, representative in Waterbury, Geraldo Reyes, said that the auto crimes in Connecticut then in two thousand and nineteen is completely out of control. The laws are too lenient, what does that mean, it means that we are letting people go. I'll tell you that, uh, I, I got a statistic from the Hartford Current after our, uh, judicial system, uh, lead Democrat at the State Capitol said that, uh, that auto crimes by juveniles was, was improving since we did the raise the age. Uh, it was started in two thousand and nine and now it's two thousand and twelve when it was implemented. Well, in two thousand and ten, two thousand and ten, in Connecticut, auto thefts by juveniles under eighteen-year-olds was a hundred and forty-three. Those were the arrests, a hundred and forty-three in two thousand and ten. In two thousand and nineteen, two thirty-seven. So when I hear that bringing juveniles in who are repeat offenders and turning around and letting them go on the streets is working, the data says otherwise. In Newington, uh, this December tenth, the Newington Town Council and Mayor calling for juvenile repeat offender reform because their crimes were up ninety-two percent. Rocky Hill Mayor and Town Officials stand with Newington to call for juvenile repeat offender reform. Also in December, Plainville Town Manager quoted, Mr. Lee says, penalties are too light and he agrees with the above, uh, uh, requests. I told you about Waterbury, Manchester Lieutenant Ryan Shea is quoted as saying on, in February twenty-twenty-one, suspects that are arrested as juveniles are back on the street in hours. And he said, not enough is being done to stop them after the arrests. So Madam Chair, I heard one of the council members say that, uh, you know, a hundred and twenty-one thousand is, is not a big deal to our taxpayers during, uh, a time of a pandemic. I disagree, wholeheartedly disagree, however, I will say, if the professionals, if the police officers and the police chief and the town manager come to us and ask us for resources, I personally will stand by and say one hundred percent I support it. Having somebody on this board who is not a professional do this in what I would call a political stand, I believe is, is inappropriate. And I am not going to support this when it comes up at the end of the meeting, Madam Chair.
Wow, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Chaplinsky. Uh, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, I'll try to, I'll try to jot down some notes here, um, first of all, Paul, um, just to go back to a couple of points you made, um, um, I think passing a resolution that the council does not have authority to do, um, and calling on changes at the state legislature and and telling the governor that he needs to, to take cer- certain action is absolutely misleading, and that's that you passed last meeting. Um, second of all, Paul, I have a question for you, yes or no? Have you been told that passing a resolution will decrease the amount of auto crimes in our community, yes or no, Paul?
I will say that all of the police chiefs have said that juvenile reform is required to make this, to make this better, so I support their recommendation.
Uh, so it's a yes or no, and I guess the answer is no, just like you said to me, and let me tell you, if I, if I or Chief Daly or anyone else was a fortune teller that could tell us what action we take that could result in a consequence like reducing crime, I think we'd all be in a much better place.
One Town Council member in Southington saying we should hire two officers.
Paul, I'm still, I'm still talking.
Hundreds of professionals in Connecticut saying we need juvenile reform.
I'm, I'm, thank you, so my point is, just like your point, that no, I, I can't honestly sit here and say that this will be the be-all and-doh solution, but neither can you. So I think that's a valid point, and I think we can agree that neither one could give us that ultimate end result. Um, the, um, to say, um, to say, um, to, to, to quote other, to give statistics for other towns, I think that goes back to the point that was originally made in that what can we do as members of the Southington Town Council, we are elected as members to represent our residents. So looking at other towns, that's fine, and they may make other, they may make suggestions in their own community, I am looking to act within the scope of authority of the Southington Town Council. I am not suggesting we do anything other than move it forward according to the outline in the ch- town charter and scheduling a public hearing to, to continue the conversation. That's, that's the request, I am not taking action or doing anything outside of that. And I stated everything very publicly at the last meeting and shared that I would get back to you all, and I did, or, uh, uh, last week. Um, the, 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 the chief, I, I think obviously this, this is becoming a political conversation, I didn't intend it to be, but I don't think that involving the police chief in policy excuse, excuse me, Jim, can I finish?
No, you can't, you need to stop now, please.
No, no, I, excuse me, Jim, excuse me, Jim, I'd like to finish my thought.
Chris, just hang on a minute.
The store department's short-staffed, Chris, you want to call them tomorrow?
Okay, Jim, Jim, um, let's just, Chris, why don't you finish up your statement and?
I don't want you to be here, Madam Chair, I, I don't need to sit here and listen to this crap.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, we just sat and listened to Counselor Chaplinsky give quite a bit of information, and I think we just have to be very respectful of each other, when someone is speaking, we let them finish. And everybody should have a right to speak.
Madam Chair, when you were, the day you were elected Chairwoman of this council, you spoke about decorum. You spoke, spoke about enforcing decorum on this council, and sadly, we are having a lack of department with Councilman Morelli. I think you need to address it, Madam Chair, thank you.
Pulis, but I do want to say this, and we're gonna stop the discussion right now. Because what's happening now is that people are frustrated on both sides. And so, happens, we're, we're human beings and we can get upset. The issue is, let's go back to the issue. Are we, uh, about to overturn the, uh, um, the opinion of our police chief? The opinion of the people who are in place to say to us what we need, or are we taking this on our own to put on, on two new police officers at a very critical financial time? This came up during the time of the resolution that was drafted by Mr. Chaplinsky and Mr., and Attorney Dietzick. And, uh, to think that there was some sort of, that, that there was some sort of, um, connection between the two, I think is very clear. However, one thing I want to say, out of this, uh, we are not going to make this political by using, uh, the police chief or his men-in-women of the fine police department that we have as political pawns, that ends right now. We, on for, um, this is on for action, and my suggestion, Chris, if you, Chris, Palmary, if you want to end it in just thirty seconds.
Ironically, yes, and ironically, that is exactly what I was saying when I was interrupted, is it's policy decision, which is why it's being brought to us. And I agree completely, I don't want it to be politicized, and I understand, I mean, Councilman Pulis, oh, I, I believe pointed out earlier too, you know, there was a plan and the chief, no, so it's a policy decision, we are the ultimate policymakers for this town.
However, we rely on experts to make that policy, it would be silly for us to make policy in a vacuum. So we do rely on those experts that we have hired, paying incredible amount of money for, whether we're talking about the Board of Ed or talking about the police or fire or whatever. So anyway, I, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I, uh, understand sometimes we can get a little hot, but let's move on and, uh, we will, uh, we will have another time to, uh, to quickly discuss this at the end of the meeting, it's on for action. Uh, so I'm going to move on. Uh, the la- the thing that I wanted to mention that is on March twenty-ninth, I've contacted Senator Simpson and, uh, the invitation has gone out to all of our leg- local legislators, uh, that we would have a town hall meeting on Monday night, it's gonna go from seven to eight to discuss some of this very thing with uh, at the state level. And so, uh, more information will be coming next, at our next meeting, and also in the press and, and press releases and such. So as I said, it's gonna be Monday, March twenty-ninth from seven to eight P.M. And, uh, everyone, all of our legislators will be invited, no matter what party they're from. And certainly, uh, the police department will be, will be invited, uh, the commissioners on the police department will be invited. Um, uh, I would like to see, uh, uh, Representative Pettit here, he, um, has been working on, uh, a bill to help some of our, these issues, so, uh, so just mark your calendars for the twenty-ninth, that would be great.
Madam Chair, just, this is Tom, a clarification on that, your intention on that meeting is for it to be a digital WebEx meeting, is that correct? Okay.
It'll, it'll be a, a virtual meeting, and, uh, we are looking forward, however, to getting, to be able to get together in person, and perhaps uh, by the end of next month, we will be able to do that, we'll see how that goes. But, uh, but yes, the twenty-ninth meeting is virtual, and it's about an hour. Very good, does anyone else have anything with Councilperson Communications?
Madam Chair. Like, Mike Del Santo.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Val, please, go right ahead.
No, Mike, you go ahead, you, you go ahead.
Thanks, Val, so I just wanted, just very brief, uh, I, I, I wanted to acknowledge that this is Women's History Month. And I do want to, uh, take a bow for, uh, uh, Chairperson Trano and Mr. Apollo, I'm very proud to serve with you both as a fine, upstanding woman of our community, uh, very fortunate to be surrounded by a very strong woman, have a strong wife, a very strong, uh, mother. And all of the women in our community and in the world, uh, it's very happy Women's History Month to you all.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Madam Chair, yes, just, I just wanted to recognize, um, the Southington DECA organization at the high school, um, they were just recently awarded, um, a gold level certification for the, uh, Southington DECA store. And, um, what they did was, because of the pandemic, they went online and they focused on selling, um, school spirit apparel, so, you know, they really had to adapt, um, to the pandemic and, and keeping the store going. Um, their advisors are Teresa Brooks and Sandy Spinello. Um, they do a great job, I, I've been involved with DECA for a number of years, and, um, you know, I just wanted to just say that they, they continue to do a great job, they're one of the best DECA organizations in the state. And, um, you know, it's just nice to see them be able to keep this going even through the, the pandemic.
That hit because of COVID with the drive-in, and they, because they manned the drive-in, uh, refreshment booth, you know, and so.
That's right, that's right.
Uh, this past year, so hopefully they'll be, uh, able to do it this year, we're hoping, so hopefully, yeah, they're great.
Chair, that's great news, I, I just want to add, just DECA and Southing- Southington High School, I remember, uh, being in high school when I was in DECA. And I remember going to the, uh, state finals and the national finals, so I'm so happy that it's still uh, an exciting thing for young entrepreneurs at the high school, it's wonderful, I can't wait for my kids to get up to high school, that's the first thing I'm gonna make sure they sign up for, it's good stuff, good stuff, Val.
Yeah, it's definitely, um, it's, it really has consistently been one of the best in the state, it's, uh, and they, they win awards every year, so it's, it's a great organization.
Very good, all right, anything else, last call?
Madam Chair, I have a few announcements, this is Chris Pulis.
Chris, go ahead.
Okay, great, um, so, um, as, uh, as you all know, um, I, I wear several different hats, uh, one of my hats is that of an educator. And, um, I just wanted to take a moment, uh, in the recent weeks, uh, Mr. Medancy, um, the Assistant Superintendent was appointed by the Board of Education, uh, as Southington's next superintendent. And I want to congratulate him publicly, but wanna, um, share from my perspective and my lens that, uh, he's, he's an excellent choice. Um, he was, uh, grown as an administrator in Southington, principal of Kennedy Middle School, then Assistant Superintendent, and now Superintendent. He understands the culture of our educational community, um, he has great experience and he's highly regarded as an educator, as a parent of two kids in Southington Public Schools, I'm, I'm extremely proud to have him at, at the helm. Um, another hat I wear is, um, that, uh, a member, an appointed member to the, um, Volunteer Firefighter Recruitment Committee. And this week.
To, um, congratulate, uh, the new fire chief, I want to save that for Mark to do officially. Is that okay? Is that okay?
That that's fine, and I I'll say a few words at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Anything else? Nothing else?
Yeah, I have.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We're going to move.
Vicki, I have one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so thank you. I like you, I'm from Congressman Larson's, and I know, Vicki, thank you for sharing this with the council, but it is good news. I want to share it with the community. So we've, you know, I'm sure many people have heard on the news all the talk about the COVID relief bills in in the U S Congress, the House and the Senate. So Congressman John Larson reached out to Southington. I want to thank him for being proactive for our community. So right now, if if everything passes, and the good news is it passed the Senate over the weekend. So at the time, Vicki, he communicated to you, it was, it had passed the House, it had gone to the U S Senate. And and just over the weekend, it did pass, and now it's going back to the House with some slight modifications. But the good news for us is if if this comes through, this would result in municipal aid of four million three hundred twenty seven thousand eight hundred fifty seven dollars for our town. That's for Southington specifically. In addition, the local education agency, the L E A aid for the Board of Ed is four million three hundred sixty six thousand dollars. So that is a significant increase for for the town of Southington. This could be used, you know, and there will be, there will be guidelines, but this could be used for pandemic response in our, specific to our community. You know, so, you know, I suggest we do that, and Mike Del Santo, I'll look to you, you know, with with our Economic Strike Committee. But this could be, maybe we could use some of the grant funding for programs to support small businesses in our community. You know, I I I'm I'm sure that's something near and dear to your heart too, but you know, I think that's something we could look into once we, once we get funding. Yeah, and and the great thing is that money that I mentioned is specific to Southington, but it's, in addition to that, our county, Hartford County, is also given a hundred, one hundred seventy three million dollars according to the relief package. And with with that, that'll be distributed by the state, so there could be additional funding on top of what I already mentioned, given from the state. So I I I think we're in a good place with some of this funding. And like I said, I'd like to see what we can do to support local businesses. They were hit pretty hard during the pandemic.
As you said, Chris, there'll be some some guidelines to it. We're not sure how the the feds will want us to spend it. But hey, we're very happy to.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Just just the ten seconds I'll take. There's going to be numerous video sessions that I'll be attending over the next several weeks. I don't, I don't know if the feds even know what what it's going to be used for at this moment, so we'll be watching it very closely. And obviously, I'll work closely with the superintendent and the incoming superintendent with a coordinated effort. But right now, the feds have not given us any inkling as to what we can use it for, what we have to submit to them at this point. So I'll keep you up to date, but right now, you guys know as much as I know about it.
Mark, will it come in one of those big, huge checks? That you get at golf tournaments with the number written in? One can only hope.
Well, I'll I'll definitely have a reporter come if that shows up. So, yeah.
Wonderful. Good.
Let's move on. Report of special committees, open space?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. A few items. The first and the the largest item is that I think in the town manager can confirm, but the referendum for the purchase of development rights for the Southington Country Club property, I believe, has passed all of the the board approvals. And we've scheduled the the referendum. So now, you know, we're putting some information packets together for some people who might need, who might need to have some questions answered. We'll be making ourselves available to anybody who would like to maybe do a deeper dive. And, you know, I know I'm going to be doing a few of those just to be available to the public who might want to ask questions. I have a few items also. I wanted to give Chris Palmieri a shout out. He's worked diligently with with Mark Ramsey at the the Leaf Program. And he's worked for quite a bit now on a few items. One is the getting approval for a well to improve the irrigation at the leaf site, which is, you know, last year was a real tragedy. The the Leaf Farm lost a significant number of crops, which again, in turn, comes into our community, is important to our farm farm heritage. So we approved some funding for a well. I will say that Chris has also been liaising with with Mark Ramsey, and there might be some some grant money there as well that that Mark's working on to offset some of those costs. In addition to the the well, Chris worked with Mark Ramsey to and and the Open Space Farm Heritage Committee to get the approval of the farm stand at Grasky for leaf so that we can periodically have some vegetables for sale and produce for sale in that that area of town. So looking forward to bringing some livelihood again to that corner after maybe a little bit of a reprieve this past year. And then the last thing at the leaf was still in process, solar panels, looking to reduce some of the costs there that are occurring through a free solar panel program, no cost to the town or taxpayers. Just, you know, looking to see if there's an opportunity to put solar panels on one of the roofs there to offset the electrical costs that are going on site. So shout out to Chris for his work, working with the leaf program. Chris, anything on the leaf site or otherwise, before I have the last two items that you wanted to add?
Well, first of all, thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And and second thing, the only other thing is I'm still continue to work on some educational connections, like we mentioned, you know, the summer camp and, you know, things like that. So to be continued, but we're trying to, obviously, this year was a little tough with with any type of field trips or whatnot, but we're we're trying to continue the educational connections specific for our community, but also look into neighboring communities as well, because we really have a gem at the leaf site.
Absolutely. Thanks, Chris. And then the last two items, Madam Chair. You know, we're we're hoping here, and now the snow's off the ground, we can finalize the the pad preparation for the the shed that was donated. We're working with the Highway Department there to get that squared away. And I'm actively looking for a volunteer, if anybody's on the call and knows Eagle Scouts or those doing projects, looking to do a a fence replacement project at the Pleasant View Site, the garden, the the farm site next to DePaulo Middle School. There's a fence that's, I would call it, it's in disarray, and I think it's it's up for a refresh. So this year, we'll be looking to see if we could find a volunteer to help help with that. That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
It might be good to reach out to John Leary, because he oversees the Eagle Scout program, and he may have somebody. Yeah.
I did, Madam Chair. Thank you. I did reach out to him, and he's putting it out in front of the entire scout program to see if anybody's interested. So thank you for the for the recommendation.
Okay, Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a pretty brief meeting last Wednesday, a couple of items to discuss. Just a reminder, we are having our household hazardous waste collection on Saturday, the twenty seventh of March. It's at the drive-in from nine to one. You can go and drop off the hazardous waste stuff like paint, oils, and all that good stuff that you can't dump at the transfer station or down the store. And the police chief also explained that some of some of our officers from our traffic division assisted last week with the first lady that visited Meredith with Mr. Cardona, the Education Secretary. So that that was pretty, that was pretty neat that we had some officers that were involved in in working with the first lady. And also, the chief mentioned that on Wednesday, March tenth, the Southington National Guard is being deployed from the Southington Armory. And and part of this group includes a Southington police officer as well. And I guess he has some discussions with Councilman Palmieri, who is the principal at DePaulo, and they're trying, they're going to maybe try to work something out so some students can go out there to wave off the the Infantry Division underway to the airport. So that'd be cool. Interesting stuff. With regards to the bulky waste transfer station on Saturday, April tenth and Saturday, April seventh, sorry, seventeen, the, there are going to be passes available at the Highway Department on those Saturdays, those specific Saturdays. So if you try to go to the transfer station on those two days and you don't have a new pass, because your pass that you have in your car is only good until March thirty first, I hope I said that right, right, thirty one days in March. It's only good until March thirty first, and so you would need a new pass beginning April first. The transfer station is closed on the third because of Easter, but if you show up on the tenth or the seventeenth, and you have an old pass, you will be turned away, but you can go right around a corner to the Highway Department and get yourself a new pass, and you'll be able to go and dump your items. But after the seventeenth, if you show up at your transfer station, you're out of luck. They'll send you away, and you'll unfortunately have to go to the Highway Department during business hours to get your new pass. With regards to the Engineering Department, the lot of items that were on our agenda unfortunately being held up by the Department of Transportation is really nothing different than we've heard over the past six or eight months. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, they're slowing a lot of the projects down. But one project of note is that the Spring Street Turning Lane onto Route Ten is finally, hopefully, going to become in fruition. They're just about finalizing the plans. So we're hoping as soon as the weather breaks, we can get to get to work on that project and have that done as soon as possible. And then one other interesting tidbit by Mr. Castarella from the Water Department is that the water tanks need to be repaired every ten years and to be painted. And it was really, he explained the process, which I thought was pretty interesting, and I'll just take a minute to describe it. There are a couple of hundred-foot steel tanks off of Robin Porter Road, and the process takes about eight weeks. The tank is drained, and the inside is sandblasted, and the outside is sandblasted, and then repainted. There's a company that goes in to perform the maintenance. It costs about one point one million dollars, and this has to get done every ten years. So I thought that was kind of interesting from from Mr. Castarella. Other than that, I'm not sure if I missed anything, or if Mr. Pulis or Mr. Chaplinsky, Mr. Chaplinsky had anything to add from our meeting?
Very complete report, Mr. Del Santo.
Don't want to miss anything.
Mike, since you asked. You know, I I can't remember who asked me. It was, it was before our our Public Works meeting. Somebody asked me where they can recycle batteries. So if you're listening to this, you can recycle your batteries at the hazardous waste disposal program. So take your household batteries that you have. Bring them to that hazardous waste program, which is, which location, Mike?
At the drive-in on the twenty seventh between nine A M. and one P M.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, very. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike, very much. I have nothing else as far as special committees. Does anyone have anything else they need to report on? Okay, thank you. Let's move right on. We have the town manager's report. Mark, why don't you?
Madam Chair, as the as the town manager, I have a lot of great opportunities to do things, and this is one of those great opportunities. I have the honor of introducing to you and the people of the town of Southington our new fire chief, someone who has worked for the town of Southington for, I believe, twenty eight years, worked himself up all the way to the pinnacle of the Sighted Fire Department. And on behalf of Chairman Wilson and the entire Fire Commission, I'd like to present to you tonight Southington's newest fire chief, Chief James Paul. Forty-five minute speech he'd like to present, so go ahead, Chief Paul. On mute, Chief. On mute, Chief.
All right, is that better?
Yeah.
All right, so I am beyond excited to be the fire chief for the Southington Fire Department. As Mark said, I'm just finishing up my twenty eighth year. I'm going into twenty nine, and quite honestly, you're stuck with me. I'm staying. I I get to work with some of the best fire officers and firefighters in the entire state of Connecticut, and they're in our hometown. So I'm proud of that. If you know me, you listen to me. I go to the calls. And I go to a lot of them, and I'm proud of our crews for what they do. I look forward to working with all of our members to move the department forward. And really, at this point, I really need to thank all of the Board of Fire Commissioners who have been a huge supporter of me, so I appreciate that. The entire town council, as well as Mark, the town manager. So I'm beyond happy that you have faith in me to lead the department. And I sincerely appreciate the opportunity, and I won't let you down. So thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. And obviously, Madam Chair, if anyone wants to say anything to the chief, I'll 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 hold the rest of my report.
Chris Pulis, I I cut you off before. Why don't you go first?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize for, I didn't look that far down the agenda when we were talking before. I just want to say, in my capacity on the Volunteer Recruitment Committee, I've interacted with Chief Paul. There is no more qualified individual in our town to take on the challenge of our Fire Department and coordinate both our full career and volunteer firefighters who make up the Southington F D. Thank you to the wisdom of the commission and and the town for hiring him, and I'm looking forward to working with him.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Yep, thank you. I just echo Chris's comments and just say thanks to the commission for hiring, you know, one of the top talents that are out there, and I'll say, you know, I was silently hoping that that you would become the next chief. And now that that's, that's official, I'm I'm very grateful that you're going to be leading our community. I feel very comfortable and excited that that the team is going to be excited to work with you in your new capacity as well. So best of luck to you, best wishes, and obviously, if there's anything that the that I can do to support, please let us, let me know.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? I'm on my cell phone, so everybody sit.
Was that me, Madam Chair? Oh, thank you. Thank you. So yes, Chief Paul, we've we've spoken. I just want to say congrats again to you and Ellie and and your family. You're you're going to be great for our town. You already have put in your your twenty eight years, as you said. So I'm I'm looking forward to working with you, and any support that that we can give you, you know, we're we're here for you. So congrats.
Thanks, Val.
Thank you. Anybody else? I don't see anybody else. I just want to.
Morelli.
Oh, Congressman.
And Councilman Palmieri, we're both heads.
Congressman Morelli. Chief, congratulations. I, you know, you know, obviously, I'm a fan. I just wanted to tell you that you have a critical, watchful eye, so be careful. Pulis is, Pulis is watching you.
Yes, she is. I appreciate that.
I'm Chris Palmieri.
Chief, couldn't be happier. Really, I I think this is a huge gain for our community. You you have invested in that department. You know inside and out what's best for this community and the Fire Department, so couldn't be happier. Vicki, Nate, Chairman Nate Wilson is here. He made our job easy, Vicki. We don't need to form a committee and go through the whole process, so Nate, great job. And I know some other commissioners are here. Chris Chanley Buck is here. I see your vice chair, and I think there's a couple other commissioners as well. So great job to the commission. Chief, couldn't be happier. Really, I know you're going to do a phenomenal job. A couple other just Fire Department related things, especially now we have our new chief. I see on the town green you're advertising again for volunteer firefighters, so please, again, we have a brand new fire chief in our community. Reach out to him if there's any interest in serving as a volunteer firefighter. We're always looking for more volunteers, and again, that that's right on the the town green. And then lastly, while I spoke to staff from Congressman Larson's office about the the aid, I followed up with him about the grant that we all know we applied for this, which which would potentially add new firefighters to our town. So Chief, I'll touch base with you in the next couple of days, but the congressman would be happy to add a letter of support for our community to hopefully get that ball rolling. So I'll reach out to you, and and we'll hopefully be successful with that grant moving forward.
That sounds great. Thank you very much, Chris.
You're welcome.
I just want to talk to Alfred Marks and just let everybody know, this was not a snap decision. And that's one of the reasons why I think you're going to do so well, Chief, because you thought about it, you you pondered what it would mean to your family, to you, and even to the community. And so on behalf of the entire town, I want to say welcome aboard. We know that you have what it takes to run a department, and I can only just speak for this board in saying that that you have the entire council behind you. We want you to succeed, and so if there's anything else that we can do for you, please don't hesitate. You have a wonderful commission, and I know Chairman Wilson has worked very, very hard, and so has Chairwoman Buck. And so, all things considered, welcome aboard, and we look forward to many years working with you. And so all things considered, welcome aboard. And we look forward to many years working with you, Chief. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right.
Thank you all. Continuing on my report at this point, the second item I have is the steep grant. As you know, we did receive the $125,000 matching steep grant, which we'll be using to improving Smore and Drive. The, what I'm asking for today is the official signing of the document. I have to pledge to the state that I do have the 125,000. We've had that for many years to do that project. So that being said, Mr. Perlo gave you a very long explanation, obviously, on why, what we're going to be doing, but we're going to be improving Smore in court. And as you know, the Smore Farm is an industrial land. That property is being purchased from the, from the estate of Mr. Manzo. And from what I understand, it's moving very quickly to have some industrial uses going there. So Mr. Perlo's mentioned in here what a benefit to the town it is. So I'll be looking for authorities so I can find the, sign the final documents for the steep grant. Happy to answer any questions that you have on this.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question on this.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Just for clarification on the memo we received, I want to read a sentence and I want to get some clarity in the record. Says the town of Suddington has $125,000 in funding. And the $125,000 steep grant fills the gap necessary to move forward with this initiative. So it's my assumption that, that these total improvements are going to cost approximately $250,000.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Town Manager?
With no further questions, obviously, Madam Chair, there will be an added executive session and there'll be no action outside of the executive.
We're up to the town attorney's report, please. Jeremy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It doesn't happen often, but I don't have anything on my report tonight for the town council. I will take any random questions, though.
All right, any, any question?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, very. It brings us to public communication right now. I would ask the folks that are going to be speaking this evening, that to remind them, this is not a political posturing. It's not to insult or to anybody on this side. And we do the, the if the chair has the right to close down communication if it fails to meet those criteria. So Paul, I'm going to turn it over to you. And let's see how we go, we go this evening. Are you going to start with the, with the, with the computer folks first?
Sure, Madam Chair. If that's what you would like, what I've done is I have now turned on the chat function. So anybody who is here on the computer, Madam Chair, can type their name in the chat function if they would like to speak during public communications. Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, it looks like we have Mark Palmeri first, who would like to speak, and then Mary DeCroche.
Very good. Thank you so much. Please state your name and address for the record, and we're here to listen.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Mark Palmeri. I live at 1131 West Center Street Extension in Suddington. I want to thank everyone for giving us an opportunity as the public just to speak a little bit tonight. And I come tonight just to speak on our optimism toward the town's efforts, as we understand them, to establish work groups, committees, and efforts in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion across the entire Suddington community. As a member of Suddington's LGBTQIA+ community, this is clearly an awfully important issue. But also as a psychologist and someone who works with individuals with complex needs, and in many regards, this is both personally and professionally an issue of great importance to me. I just want to take a couple of moments to encourage that as, as the council considers committee work of this nature, as our community considers it, that we remember the many, many faces of diversity that we should endeavor to support when we consider equity and inclusion. In those needs to be considered, those with complex neurodevelopmental issues, and in that, what we mean are those who might experience autism spectrum disorder, other developmental disabilities, complex mental health needs, and that one feature of diversity must include that population. In addition, of course, those in the LGBTQIA+ community around whom, as, as I myself have spoken at previous meetings, we continue to encourage that sexual orientation, as well as gender identity and gender expression be strongly considered. That any effort, included as often as possible, in open structure where participants throughout our community are encouraged to engage, encouraged to feel comfortable coming. I, I want to remind all of us that it may seem like an easy thing to join a committee, but if you are a member of a community around whom you sometimes may not feel comfortable, you may not feel well supported, that coming and speaking at a committee that addresses diversity, equity, and inclusion can be terribly complex, and that we should work intentionally to make that an open, transparent process, one that's welcoming and inclusive, and one that's sensitive to age span issues as well. Issues that are sensitive to those of childhood, as well as adulthood, and importantly, elder care, which is another feature of diversity we encourage the council to consider seriously as elder abuse and lack of representation in the elder community is a tremendous challenge, not just in Suddington, but globally. So we just ask that at all times, the committee consider as open a format as possible, as inclusive of a format as possible. One that moves slowly and one that is sensitive, that sometimes members may need to submit information in a way that's comfortable, confidential, that sometimes allows them to share their life experiences when those might have been difficult. And that committees of this nature are tremendously powerful. They can change lives, but they do need to move with great sensitivity. So I'm just here tonight to ask for that sensitivity, that it move forward transparently, and that when issues of diversity are considered, that we widen that discussion to include racial issues, cultural issues, age issues, mental health issues, those issues of LGBTQIA+ individuals, and that together, we bring together as inclusive of a community as possible. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this tremendously important issue. And myself, as well as many of my colleagues, all of whom are residents of Suddington, remain available to the town to help in any way possible.
Thank you, Mark. It was informative. Thank you so much. Who's next, Mr. Chaplinsky?
Madam Chair, we have Mary DeCroche up next, and then Jeff Natchris.
Hi, Mary. Hello. Hi, everyone. It's me again, Mary DeCroche, 287 Wedgewood Road. I'm here again to talk about the Martin Luther King mural project. Madam Chair, Vicky Triano, Victoria Triano, and I talked this past Saturday. And it was a heartfelt, respectful, open discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair. But I was disappointed to hear that she caressed with her party. And because of the timing of the project, they felt they could not and would not support it at this time. I am thankful that Chris Palmeri, Chris Pulis, and Val DiPaolo is, are in support. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The first thing is, is.
Madam Chair, can I, can I lodge, can I lodge an objection to what we just said? I know it's public communication, but these are Robert's rules of order. I'm going to object. I'm going to object to what we just stated. There's been no vote taken. There's been no straw poll. I know it's your decision to allow this communication going forward, but this is not appropriate. I know it's public communication, but you can't just say whatever you want to say. She's saying how I'm going to vote on a future issue. I take offense to that. So I've lodged my objection.
Yeah, it has not been put forth as a form yet. And so there has not been, Mary, in terms of what, how we, I, I want to be sensitive to it. So because it's not been on the agenda, no one has voted yet, you know. So, and I, I understand Bill's feelings because to say that everybody's against it or everybody's for it, when we haven't actually had a chance to vet it and, and put it on as a proposal. So if you could just go on, Mary, but understanding where that's coming from.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, before Mary. Before Mary continues, I, I just wanted to mention that this is not something that we will vote on. The, the council will not vote on this. There's nothing to vote on. You know, it's, it's a project that's going to go forward. So I don't want Mary to feel like she did something wrong. There's the council, council's not going to vote on it.
I said that, ma'am. Which is before, you know. So that's why I'm saying, how can, you don't know. We haven't voted. That's all I'm saying. But Mary. Thank you.
Okay, I, I apologize. It was misunderstanding on my part, Mr. Deizer. I said things that I thought was okay to say, but they weren't, and I accept that. I guess I, I just want to say that it, it's a very simple, simple idea. It can be a very powerful event for our town. I, I also want to clarify that in a letter that I sent, that it was never my intention to accuse my town of being racist, which I think happened. I just, there was a sentence in my four paragraph letter that it began with the idea and the acknowledgement that Suddington has already taken steps for diversity. And that I believe that this is just another step to create communication, working together, and accept each other for who we are. I'm an artist. I'm not a politician. This in no way is political in any shape or form. It's an artistic event that we have been invited into. And I just, all I wanted to do was share my passion for it and to invite you to be part of it if you want it to be. But with or without, with the support I have, without the support I don't have, this, this is a project that I feel is going to help the town of Suddington. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say. And.
I, I do want, it was something that we spoke about and how with, with the town's alignment, that a grant would be probably available. Is that correct?
Yes, there is funding by Sustainable Connecticut. That with the support of the town.
Correct. That's why I wanted to make it clear for Val, because that was, you know, we're not going to vote on whatever. Well, you know, there is an issue that has the town involved in it. And so I just wanted to get. Thank you, Mary.
Yep. Can I just say one more thing for that funding? That funding is not necessary. There are other avenues and there is other funding from the state that would support this project.
I see. Thank you so much. Thank you. Paul?
Hi, Madam Chair. Looks like we have Jeff Natchris and then Jenny McPherson.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chairman. My name's Jeff Natchris. I live at 22 Ridgewood Road here in town. I'm a retired police sergeant from the town of Stratford. I listened to the discussion earlier about law enforcement resources. And what struck me with this was that both sides are actually right. The state in the legislative session has invoked laws and created laws that are limiting officers' abilities to properly enforce things. But from my, you know, my look at our department, our department is significantly undersized for the size of our town and what we have in terms of infrastructure around us, most notably 84 and 691, with all the points of access and egress in and out of town. Specifically, the, the areas and what I will say is I think that our police department does punch weight way above their weight. They do more with less. My concern is that we don't have the investigative capacities within our detective bureau that many other municipalities do have, which does hurt us in terms of investigating incidents like these car breaks, you know, the car thefts, just the burglaries that are associated with them. You know, from my understanding of how our manning works in town, we do have large portions of the department working through the busiest hours, but then it does drop off significantly. Well, 71 officers for a town our size is not, is not very much. Especially when you start breaking it down in terms of who you actually have on the road. We have a chief, a deputy chief, three lieutenants, five master sergeants, and somewhere between eight and 10 sergeants. That's eating up a lot of that 70 right there. And then you're actually taking detectives out of that, too. So your actual manning on the road is significantly impacted by just the command structure, as well as the administrative needs that any department is going to have. The long and the short of what I would maybe implore you guys to consider is maybe a study in evaluating where we need to be and where we need to go as a town in terms of needs, in terms of how we want our police to police. Throwing money at a problem doesn't solve it. But there are means in which we can add personnel to be effective and to assist in making quality of life better in this town and to investigate not just property crime, but all aspects of other crime. You know, we've seen recently, there was an arrest at the, the Motel 6 for human trafficking. We have bigger problems in this town than I think we care to admit and realize sometimes. And having the ability to investigate these properly is important. So that's all I have. I'm just trying to think about our men and women.
Excuse me, Jeff?
Yes.
Our detective bureau is understaffed. Now, I'm not.
I, sorry, ma'am.
You made a comment about our detective bureau understaffed. And my question is, how did you get that information? And did you get it from a reliable source? Because.
I pulled, so I pulled off, I pulled numbers off of the different, the different websites available for criminal justice within the state post. I believe that I had, I don't want to.
But you were specific. Were specific about our department and that the detective bureau is under. I would like to know the source of that information.
I have spoken with various officers throughout town, and I believe that we only have somewhere between seven and eight detectives. So I can give you an example. The police department where I worked is Stratford. Stratford is approximately 52,000 people. The time when I retired as a sergeant, we were staffed at 107 officers. We had a 16-person detective bureau.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is verify those with the chief or anything like that.
No, I did not specifically speak to the chief in terms of, of that.
Okay, thank you so much, Jeff. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I, I, I wanted to just thank the gentleman for his, for bringing the, the perspective forward. It's always good to hear from professionals or retired professionals. And, you know, I would like to say that I believe some of the comments are consistent with what we heard from the Board of Finance meeting about a week or so ago, where the chief and the deputy chief, and I'm going to kind of paraphrase a little bit here because I wrote down the quotes, but maybe not exact. I think the deputy chief said, hey, right now. I think the deputy chief said, hey, right now, the chief and I are going to take this next year to evaluate the department and our needs. And I believe the comment maybe to the gentleman who just spoke, they said something like policing is changing. You know, the way that legislation has occurred over the years and looking into the future, especially with the new laws that have been put in place even in this past year, the way that police officers and investigations and things are done is an evolution. And so they've committed in their comments in that last meeting to actually look at these two new officers coming out. One of them's coming out already, one of them is coming out shortly. And they actually came on the record and said they want to evaluate this next year. And, you know, maybe in the next budget cycle, there might be more information that they, that they would come for with respect to, to needs. And then I think it was a deputy chief who said, you know, right now, you know, we're looking to figure out where we need to focus our energy. So that's all, Madam Chair, I thought it was fairly consistent with the gentleman's comments.
Thank you very much. Who's up next, please, Paul? You're silent.
Sorry, Madam Chair, Jenny McPherson and then Nathan Wilson.
Go ahead. Jenny McPherson, please.
Hi, I'm Jenny McPherson, thirty-nine Matthews Street. Just more of a couple of questions. Is the Diversity and Inclusion and Equity Committee a done deal? Is that going to actually be a thing, or does it have to be voted on?
Well, the proposal that's before the council right now is a proposal that may or may not pass. It has certain elements in it and others that were not included. So all I can say, Ms. McPherson, is that when, at the end of the meeting, there will be a discussion on the proposal that's before us and action will be taken. So I can't, I can't, I can't answer your question completely because I'm not sure if you've had a chance to read the proposal that was proposed last meeting.
I have a little bit, but I'll wait for the discussion later.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I would just like to add that there, there won't be public input during that session later.
Right.
Any questions, Ben?
Really, this time is not for us to go back and forth, Ms. McPherson. It's a time for you to say what is on your heart, and we're here to listen.
Okay, so I would just like to say, for the Committee on Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, think about having representatives on that committee from the Board of Ed, from the Police Department, from the local business association, et cetera. And also, will you be working with the current Coalition for Social Justice?
Mm-hmm.
Good for that.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your points are well taken, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, Nathan Wilson and then Jack Perry.
Welcome, Chair.
Thanks, Madam Chair, Nate Wilson, two eleven Woodbury Hill Drive in Southington. I just wanted to personally thank the town council members for your support for Chief Paul and just extend our thank you from the Board of Fire Commissioners. Also, a big thank you to Mr. Shoda and many other members in the community for supporting Chief Paul. I promise he will not let you down, he's gonna do a fantastic job. So we appreciate it, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Nate, we appreciate you and your, in your department, in your commission, thank you. I believe Jack Perry's next, is that what you said? Yes. Hi, Jack.
How's it doing? Thank you. Obviously, I want to speak about, you know, adding, you know, more resources to our town. As a business owner, well, let me go back a step. Jack Perry, one fifty-three Moore Hill Drive in Southington, and also a local business owner. Obviously, I've been, you know, reading in, and obviously, car thefts, I think everybody's been a victim to in one capacity or another, either a family member, friend, neighbor, you know, or community. You know, we're all victims on this. I was watching, you know, the resolution, you know, that passed. And, you know, it's, I guess we have to do everything we possibly can. But the first thing I see, you know, and obviously, I'm politically involved, and I'm gonna be the first one to say that. And I got involved politically by, you know, being involved in my community that I care and love so much about. Is, this seems really red and blue. I hate that, you know, first and foremost, I hate that. Obviously, we need to work with our police department, give them every resource possible. You know, shooting down a public hearing to allow the public to discuss this with the Board of Finance, I just don't think is the right thing. As, as a business owner, leader of my company, you know, I have staff that I give budgets to, and they have to operate inside those budgets. As the town council, you guys in the Board of Finance are there to help give them the budgets that they need. And I guarantee almost every department doesn't get every dime that they want to see, would like to see. But we need real solutions right now. And I feel that, you know, this is something that should not be just swept underneath the rug. I think this should be worked on in a bipartisan manner. And let's really, you know, discuss this. You know, this is something that I think is very emotional, and I think that's what we're also seeing flare up here, is a lot of emotions. Let's pull all the emotions away, let's pull party affiliation away, and let's just work together as a town community on this. I personally, you know, I have friends and family members in law enforcement. I've always stuck behind them. And whatever we can do to help them, you know, it may not just be adding officers. It may be special tools or equipment to help them. Obviously, you know, resolution, you know, I've heard a lot of issues at the state level. Obviously, I ran for state senate this past election. And I heard a lot of issues that our state's dealing with. And it saddens me that, you know, we're here now. But let's focus on this, and I feel that at a local level, there's only so much we can do as a town. And I'd love to see our local officials, you know, working together to find real solutions. Get, you know, Mark Shoda in on this, you know, Chief Daley, you know, let's just get everybody in. Board of Finance, obviously, as a business owner, I don't want to see taxes go up. That's in a resident, you know, in a homeowner as well. You know, my company alone pays hundreds of thousands in taxes in town, which I love my town, don't mind paying it. But same time, I just want to see money well spent. And if it's protecting, you know, our community, I think that is, you know, first and foremost, and the officers. You know, I know there's comments made about overtime. Well, we all know that, you know, as you work harder, you know, you get more exhausted. This is very draining, you know, and I feel our officers, you know, whatever we can do to help them, we need to work with them. So I would love to see you guys, you know, work on this. You know, I think moving this to the next, you know, phase is very important. And if it dies at the public hearing at the Board of Finance, then so be it. But stopping it here, you know, in red versus blue, I just don't want to see that, please. And that's pretty much it. So thank you, everyone, have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, thank you so much, Jack, thank you.
Madam Chair, it looks like the last person who's put their name in the chat, Stephanie Mitchell.
Very good.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I hope you can hear me, I've been having technical issues this evening.
Yes, we can, yeah, Steph, you can.
Great, thank, thank you. First of all, Happy International Women's Day to you and to everybody on the call. And I just to speak upon the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee that is being discussed. I believe it's essential, first of all, let me just give you my address. It's Stephanie Mitchell, one seventy-seven Miller Farm Road in Plansville. Again, it's essential that we build upon and complete the important work of organizing a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee here in town. I support the efforts of Town Councilor Val DePaolo and community members Michelle Lebrun Griffin and the Reverend Dr. Ron Brown, who were dedicated to working collaboratively for three months to create a thorough and comprehensive proposal for a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee here in town. And Chairwoman Triano, it's my understanding that you participated in those initial discussions, and you had all agreed upon them.
I wrote the original document.
Right, the town council, though, I feel must accept and follow through on their proposal exactly as Town Councilor DePaolo, Ms. Lebrun Griffin, and Reverend Dr. Brown intended. I ask that the town council accept the following for the committee. The committee first must be charged with a proactive, solutions-oriented order and agenda that is representative of the diverse perspectives, voices, and resources of our entire community here in Southington. Also, the committee's purpose should be to serve as a vital resource for the town council while also elevating the important voices, the perspectives, experiences of all of our town members in the community. There should be an open application committee members who must have a commitment to being sensitive and respectful while providing meaningful dialogue and proactive input and serve in the best interests of our members of Southington. And most importantly, the application process and committee member appointments should not be based on party affiliation. Finally, the committee should comply with the Freedom of Information Act requirements and should have the purview of self determine, to self-determine its organizational structure as it would report directly to the town council. I thank you very much for the opportunity again and the time to speak to you this evening, and you all have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. Anyone else, Paul?
Madam Chair, it looks like two additional people have put their name in. Michelle Brunn Griffin and then Dawn Gambasini.
Very good.
Good evening, town council members, Michelle Lebrun Griffin, parent sixty-five Knights Court. I just want to say how thrilled I am that you are, each of you individually and all of you collectively are taking some strong consideration for the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee. As was already previously mentioned, there was some great suggestions that were proposed by members of both the council and the community of what this might look like. And I think you've heard from several people. I'm going to reach back to our first speaker, Mark Palmeri specifically, who spoke about the importance of representation on this committee and the importance of all of the different groups that may be represented on this committee. I appreciate some of the individual council members who reached out to me for further information on things like what are other communities doing with their Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committees? What does their membership look like? What does their charge look like? And that information has been provided to support you in your decisions. I think one of the most important things to remember tonight, if you should decide to make your decision this evening or take action this evening, is this is really something that transcends party affiliation. I am unaffiliated. And as we recognize in our national context, this is something that when we are thinking about what the missing perspective is, we want to be certain that we're making our decisions with that in mind. So an example of that, just to be really concrete, is with the, you know, the crime resolution or the Neighborhood Watch or maybe the additional police officers, just, just all of those types of ideas. One thing I think that's getting lost in all of that is how that is affecting our youth, how that is stereotyping our youth, how that is particularly affecting the lives of our teen boys in particular, and specifically our black and brown. So this weekend, there was a posting on the Neighborhood Watch that maybe some of you saw and some of you didn't, that actually proposed or suggested that a friend of my son's was part of this criminalization. And entirely not true, but is now going to have a very lifelong effect and impact on him. And obviously, on my son. And so we need to think about what that looks like and what we mean when we're creating, and, you know, these resolutions and these decisions. I do not want my son and his friends to fear walking to Memorial from where we live on Knights Court, which is not far, to play ball or to walk downtown or to go to the Y and be fear of, you know, being signaled out, you know, to be, to be, be participating in some of these criminal activities. So I say that is an example of what the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee may support you with as a town council. Not only to obviously bring things to your attention if there is cause or need for that, but also to be very preventative and support you with some of those missing perspectives as decisions are being made. So I so appreciate your, again, bringing it on your agenda this evening for consideration. And I hope that is unanimously favored. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Madam Chair, it looks like there's one additional person who's typed in the chat. Dawn Gambasini, do I say Gambasini or Gambachini?
Yes, Gambasini, thank you. Dawn Gambasini.
Thank you for clarifying.
Of two thirty-nine Hitchcock Road. I'll be very brief, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to support the proposal of a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee as it's been written. And I agree with the words of Ms. Lebrun Griffin and Ms. Mitchell. I believe that all town residents in Southington can only benefit from the existence of such a committee. And I believe the proposal deserves your unilateral support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gambasini. So Madam Chair, right now, it looks like nobody else has typed in the chat. So if it's okay with you, we can ask the participants who are on the phone if they would like to participate.
Sure.
So if there are, if there are residents of Southington who are on the phone in a call-in only that would like to speak during public communications, you may do so now by unmuting your phone. You can do that by pressing star six. Press star six to unmute your phone, announce yourself, and give your name and address for the record, and then you may begin to speak. It looks like, Madam Chair, there's four call-in users. Are there any call, are there any call-in users who would like to speak during public communications? Please press star six now to unmute your phone and speak and give your name and address for the record. Okay, Madam Chair, there's no call-in users who would like to speak. And it looks like the chat function is also complete. So if it's okay with you, I will shut the chat function down.
Very, very good. Thank you, everybody, for making very good presentations for the council. Your words are noted, and we will move on. So our first item under item eight, item A, is action on the request for a public hearing for the Board of Finance.
I'd like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the Board of Finance for the request to add an additional police officer. As outlined in the email that I sent, this would be specifically to increase the department's salary line by a hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Do I have? Is that you, Chris Pulis, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Very good. So there's a motion and a second. So I would like to open a discussion point in time.
I think we, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I think we had several discussion points made earlier in the meeting. That would be my comment.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this motion before we call the roll?
Chris, what, can I go first, Chris, or would you like me to go?
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, sure. You know, I just want to reiterate some comments that I made during the last meeting. And as I see it, there are three things that this council can do to deal with our auto theft program, problem. First, we can promote community awareness with local groups. We're supporting our Neighborhood Watch groups. Again, we're thankful for their volunteer efforts. I think it's helpful in a certain way to give the police more eyes and ears. Second, on this council, we can take action. It's our jurisdiction, within our jurisdiction, to address the issue. And that leads us to this motion that's on the table. I fully support scheduling the public hearing for further conversation about adding police manpower to the SPD. I liked what Mr. Perry said in public comment. He said, we're gonna have a conversation, we're gonna bring in key players, and we're gonna, rather than speculate, we're gonna get answers from people at a public hearing and input to explore this. And this is, this is not the only way to address the issue. It's one additional way to address this issue. And thirdly, we can reach out and we could share our community challenges with state legislature, with the state legislators. I think this is well within our capacity to have a conversation with them. And I'm proud, pleased to see that we have a town scheduled. I think this is well within our capacity to have a conversation with them, and I'm proud pleased to see that we have a town scheduled. Addressing auto theft is not a simple matter. It's a complicated issue. There's not one single lever we're gonna pull to address it. Rather, we need to take a multi-pronged approach to addressing it. Many of the prongs have pros, and they're not gonna be perfect. But together, they will, they will bring us closer to addressing this problem. I think the public hearing to discuss adding more manpower is one of these steps that we could take. That's why I support this.
Okay, very good. Anyone else have any comments? Yeah, Chris, Paul Mary?
Just the other thing that's important, and others that I thought was made a good point is Mr. Naturis. You know, I don't think it's, I don't think, I don't think it's necessarily bad to do a study, and and what this would do is allow us the opportunity to move forward. The the motion is specific that the money would go in the salary line item. We all know that the town manager already added fifty thousand dollars for overtime in the existing budget request. So the chief obviously could benefit from overtime with everything that's going on right now, and he's already got that additional overtime added to the budget. But but keep in mind, again, as I said before, that if we don't use this for any reason, I mean, I think we all can agree, we hope this problem maybe goes away and things resolve itself. And and if that's the case, then the money would remain either in the undesignated fund balance or, again, it would allow an opportunity for the town manager to suggest completing some projects at the end of the fiscal year if there is money left over. So moving it forward at this point would just be scheduling a public hearing. We all know it would obviously come back to us in the future, but it just allows the process to move forward and allow more input from the public.
Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, this is Bill. Can I speak real quick? Madam Chair, I think this is really, really well-intentioned. And I wish this could be, at least speak for myself, a bipartisan effort, but, you know, the answer I got tonight was exactly what I need to know. I mean, absent any evidence in front of us from the town manager or the chief police requesting officers, I don't know why we're gonna put the public through a public hearing, but, you know, I do think it's well-intentioned, but that's solely what I rely on. There's just nothing in front of us requesting it, so I'm not gonna substitute my judgment for either of theirs.
Thank you.
And?
I have one one additional comment, Madam Chair. Just for the public's knowledge here. Our chief of police has done a fantastic job for our town for, it's somewhere around twenty years. I don't know what exactly what it is. So it's disheartening to see that these kinds of games being played over the last two weeks, and and now I'm hearing we want to do a study to 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 figure out what the chief needs or doesn't need. Our police department, our chief and our deputy chief and our town manager know what our town needs. They have it under control. So I said it earlier, I'm sticking with the with the professional recommendation that comes with that. And if there's if there's any commentary that the chief should hear, let's have it earlier in the year. Let's have, let's have the, let's do it the appropriate timeframe. We don't need to be requesting a public hearing at the at the eleventh hour here. So I'm not supporting this this public hearing. I think it's useless.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Mike Del Santo. So as evidenced earlier in the meeting, you know, I think I made it pretty clear I'm not going to be supporting this. I just cannot look someone who had their car stolen or had their car broken into or had some punk walk into their garage and steal their car out of their garage. And now we're gonna go and tell them, don't worry about it. All we're gonna do is raise your taxes. We're gonna hire two cops, pay a little bit more money, and then, like I said earlier, the two additional cops could stand on Route ten and wave at these knuckleheads getting on Route eighty-four because we can't change them. Problem at Hartford, at the prosecutor's office, let's fix the problem there. Okay, we don't have a manpower problem with the Southington Police Department. The problem exists in Hartford and with the prosecutor. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yep, Paul, go ahead.
Yep, thanks. I'll just say, you know, it's possible that in the future, after the assessment from the chief and deputy chief, that they come for resources and, you know, I'll be, as I mentioned, I'm I'm very eager to support if they feel that that's gonna be a benefit to this town. I think councilperson Palmeri mentioned a little earlier, fifty thousand bucks in OT were approved, you know, and that shifted. I see that, to me, as the message from our leadership that says, this is what we need to do to take care of things short term, and that's the lever they prefer to pull. I stand behind them. I stand behind the police department. I stand behind the chief and the town manager, and I support that as well. And, you know, I think the twenty-five additional pairs of eyes that we have on the ground for the from the Neighborhood Watch are doing a fabulous job. Our officers are doing a fabulous job, and, you know, abs any statistic that tells me that adding police officers is going to solve the auto crime, I think it would be irresponsible of us to just willy-nilly add police officers without, you know, the town manager, the chief, the police commission saying they need it, the union, you know, if somebody had come here other than the, you know, just the proposal by a councilperson, then I would say, you know, let's let's entertain it. I'm not by other, I'm not bothered by the eleventh hour, you know, it's, it can be the eleventh and a half hour. If that's what our leadership says we need at any time during the year, I'll be there supporting it. Until then, I see this as a political move maneuver, and I think that it's, I won't be supporting it this evening.
Anyone else?
Yes. Yep, Paul, please, you know, I find it insulting that you say it's a political move. I said it from my heart last meeting when we were talking about this, and I mean it with all sincerity. When we're talking about, and Mike, to your point too, I don't necessarily disagree with you about some of the issues in Hartford. But like I said at the last meeting, we are elected as Southington council members. This is within the scope of our authority. Talking about changing legislation at the state level is not in our purview as Southington Town Council members. But our residents have their voice when they go to the elections and elect who they send as their state senator and state representatives. So they absolutely have that voice within our elected state representatives. Tom, I think it was you that made a comment about the 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 assessment. I mentioned what Mr. Naturis suggested. That is also in line with basically what the chief and deputy chief said as they want to assess it. What I'm saying is, you know, we can give them the resources now so that we don't need to wait a whole other year and a half because we all know that if it's in next budget cycle, it wouldn't take effect until July first, twenty twenty-two. This would put it January first. It would give a little bit more leverage. And again, if it's not needed, then it doesn't go anywhere. It's the motion is specific for the budget line item. Keeping in mind, they already got the money and their overtime budget approved through the town manager's process.
Okay, is there anybody else I'm ready, almost ready to call the the roll? I just, I will not be supporting this evening. Yes?
I'd like to speak, please.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
I would like to comment that personally, I find this thing insulting to me, to the town manager and to the chief of police. And the voters do have a voice, and they have spoken. And nobody asked for this, but it's a political move, in my estimation, a hundred percent political move. It's inappropriate, and I won't support it as well.
Thank you, Jim. I think everything is said. I think that it, yes. I don't want to compromise what you said, Chris, about it not being political, but the fact of the matter is, when the resolution came up, it should have been a hundred percent. Because if you really believe that that we need more men, it would have given you more of credibility in what you're doing tonight. So I want to follow the the experts in the field. I want to follow the experts in Southington, and as you said, the people voted, certain people in in Hartford to make policy, and they did that also locally. So with that, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll on this motion, and the motion is a request, a positive request to have a public hearing for the Board of Finance, to schedule a public hearing for the Board of Finance. So you would be either in favor of that or? Madam Clerk, please call the roll, please.
Pulis?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
No.
Bill Santo?
No.
Paolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
No.
Lombardi?
No.
Morelli?
No.
Paul Mary?
Yes.
Triano?
No. Thank you, everybody, and let's move on. Item B is the Action of Town Council Diversity Subcommittee. Now, there was a lot of talk during public communication about supporting a proposal, a proposal that was made earlier on in our individual call. And there was not consensus for that, for that proposal. Last meeting, there was a formal proposal made that the members of the and so I'm looking for a motion to put a discussion and action on the proposal that was made at the last.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before the motion is made, I guess in, you know, in the spirit of trying to be bipartisan with this, given everything that, you know, we've, everything we've gone through tonight, the proposal that you and I and Pastor Ron and Michelle Lebron worked on is a very good proposal. And is it, is there a way that we can table the proposal that you put forth at the last meeting and work on this in a bipartisan manner? So I would be happy to work with any of my colleagues on the council and take into account, you know, receiving, we've received a lot of feedback from from the public. It would be good to maybe get some more perspectives from the public, but let's work on this together so that we can provide something that's, you know, so important to our community. And I just want to, it was pointed out to me by a resident the presentation that was done for the Southington Country Club. Right? We, I mean, we've seen that presentation a few times. It was tremendous. And what she pointed out was that everybody was, everybody was brought together on that. You know, we had to have someone speak from open space, from infrastructure, from the education side, our assessor's office, the economic impact to our community. The pros and cons were put out there, you know. Is this, is this good? Is this beneficial? What is the cost over time of the bonding for this? So that when our residents go to a referendum, they've had all the, they have all the information. And it just strikes me that that is so important to our community, and look at the diligence and the preparation that went into putting that together, because that's an important thing for our community, the the open space. So I really believe in my heart that having a Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee is, rises to that level. Like, do we, you know, do we as a council believe it's as important as something like that, like Southington Country Club? And if it is, you know, we should be talking to people in our community. We should be talking to people that do not look like you and I. You know, people of color. As Mark Palmeri had mentioned, you know, people with with disabilities. And and really work on this so that we can make our community proud of what of what us as a council together can do. We, I mean, I hate to see us, if you put forward this one tonight, we're gonna have all kinds of changes on it that we're gonna ask for, and it's, it's gonna take up a lot of time. So if we can work on that together and come to some compromise, I think that is really going to accomplish much more than what we would do tonight.
Well, the scope of what we have before us is quite limited. So my understanding is that you would however, until we have another proposal to look at and perhaps work in the future, we are, we table it, but there's guarantee that we're going forward with any time constraint until we see another proposal, and then we have to set up a workshop that we have to talk about. And we are, we are on about six months till the election. And, you know, I had, I had a very with Pastor Ron Brown, and and I know that, you know, having been on the committee and had this vision for four years, six years, it's, it's not, it's not something that I want however, Pastor Ron said to me, you know, we try our best and so we need to be focused on what is before us right now. So Val, are you making a motion to table?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Well, I would like to know what
Well, Madam Chair, I would, I, some of what you said, I wasn't catching. The proposal, there is, we don't have to prepare another proposal. We have a proposal ready, the one that we all prepared. So if that, that would be a proposal.
But that hasn't been vetted, proposal on the table, other than the one that's on the agenda.
So, so can we put that on the table? That's what I'm saying. If we table tonight, can we put that proposal on the table now? So how does that get put?
So you make a, you would make a formal proposal if that's the first, if it's the first thing that you and I and Michelle and Pastor Ron worked on, you would bring it to me and ask me to put it on the agenda for discussion. That's what
Can I, can I, can I? You were part of the committee. I mean, you, you and Val worked together on this. And Val sent that out to the full council. But I just don't understand because you were an author of it with Val. I mean, it already was vetted, and we had two other community members with you. That's what I don't understand.
Oh, Chris, let me explain it then, and I have to be very careful because it was discussed in executive session, and so I don't want to, I want to be, I don't want to betray anything that happened in executive session. But the fact of the matter is there was at all on that proposal. So now, so there's no consensus on that proposal. So I, in an attempt to gain consensus, put together this proposal. If this proposal is not something that people cannot get behind, I understand that. So which means we need to have another proposal that people can get behind, that there's common ground. It's exactly how it works. Chris, you know that. You were chair before. So now, add another for tonight's meeting. If you bring back the old proposal, Val, you can certainly, you know, bring it forth, and we can discuss it. And if there is consensus or a possibility of that one passing, then we can talk about putting it on the agenda. But right now, we have to stay with the agenda, what we have on the agenda. So that's why I'm asking, is it your desire to table this proposal?
Well, yes, if there's going to be a consensus to table, I don't want this, I don't want the proposal that's on the agenda tonight that to go, that we have to vote on it. I would rather table it and then present the next proposal for the next agenda.
Well, I
Madam Chair, can I say, can I just say one, can I make one comment if it's okay before we get to the motions? If it's all right. So is that all right, Madam Chair?
Of course.
You know, I, I, I want to show some good faith here. I really do. I think this is super important for our town. So I just, I wanted to tell you, Val, respectfully, I think the fatal flaws in your proposed language is that, one, from the comments from the public and the document itself contemplated being this completely unaffiliated board, which I don't think, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a Connecticut state statute that requires, incorporated in our charter, that requires minority and majority. that requires minority and majority representation. So it has to be political under state law. My second is that, these are the two fatal flaws. I don't want, I just wanna have it on the record here, because we can't talk about it anywhere else. Is that I don't think that we can guarantee privacy confidentiality of our citizens and say that we're gonna consent to the FOI. No, no, no. FOI tells you what's discoverable. We can't have that. So again, I wanted to show good faith and show you that those are my two fatal flaws that I perceive in the proposal. And I cannot support them with fatal flaws like that, because it's just, it's opening, it's asking for a lawsuit. But I just wanna tell you that.
I appreciate that, Bill, and that's something that we could, that's something that can be worked on. The, the appointments, I think, I don't think we have to have appointments, but if we did, I would like to see that each side appoints the same number of people, rather than the majority appoints a certain number and the minority appoints a lesser number. So I think, I understand where you're coming from, and I think there's things we can work on with both, coming together on both proposals. So, you know, I...
Have a motion to table. Is there a second for the motion to table?
I'll second.
All right. We have second to table.
I've discussed...
There's no discussion on the motion to table.
All right, I missed it.
All right, so let's call the roll. The motion is to table the proposal that is before us. So Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? Yes. Paul, yes.
Pulis?
You were muted, Chris.
Sorry. Yes to table.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Bill Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmary?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. So this action is tabled to a further date and we'll go with it from there. Action on the steep grant, item number, item C is...
Madam Chair, I'd like to make, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Steve Grant.
I'll second that.
And that was Chris Pulis that seconded it. Very good.
Roll call, please, Madam Chair.
Please, let's have a roll call. Thank you.
Pulis?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
DeSanto?
Absolutely.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmary?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Thank you. Val?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the tax refunds that are outlined in our package tonight.
Second, Madam Chair, it's Bill.
Thank you, Bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any other... The item, appointments, Tom?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I will be put forward, put forward three names for the Senior Citizen Committee. So I'll do one at a time if that's okay with you. The first, I would like to appoint Lisa Kamusso. She is a former Board of Education member and she will be replacing her father, someone who we all know, in Benny Kamusso. So I'll look for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve Lisa Kamusso.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor for a week? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The next name I will be putting forward tonight is Michael Bunko, former fire commissioner.
I'm motion to approve that.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Okay, second. All those in favor of Michael signify by saying aye.
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 Any other... Very good. Congratulations, Mike. Congratulations. And the third...
The third, third appointment, I would like to put forth the name of Carmilla, Carmilla Pimmel.
That's right. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll make the motion, actually.
Okay, very good. Favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Senior Citizen Commission, Committee, we congratulate all of them. And I wanna thank them for serving so many years. That is a pillar of our community, for them well. And we see the Kamusso name alive and well on the, so thank you so much. All right, we're looking for adjournment. And going into executive session, we're going to have the town manager and the attorney. It, we don't expect to count any first action after the... So could I have a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Into executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel matters, including the council, the manager and the town attorney.
Is that it, Tom?
That's it.
I'll second, yep.
Very good. All in favor? Delay is crazy. Thank you so much. We'll see you on the other side. Thank you, everybody.